Go ahead and get started. I want to thank everyone for accommodating. We had an incident with a power outage at City Hall, which is why we're over here. So, thank you. And I want to thank our staff and for the remarkable turnaround for makeshift council chambers. So, let's thank staff for their hard work on this. This is the Tempe City Council Work Study Session for August 10th, 2017. We are here at the Transit Center in the Don Casana Room. The first item on our agenda is our call to the audience for the issue review session. Audience members have up to three minutes to address the city council. If you'd like to have a speak on an item, please fill out a speaker's card and you may do so. So, the first item is the issue review session, which is Downtown Tempe Authority Special Events, the Procedure for Naming of Cities' Facilities, Recreation of Value of Capital Improvements, Proposed Business License Registration, Voluntary Downzoning, In a Bluebird, Philanthropies' Mayor's Challenge, and there's the Opinion on Editorial Regarding the Code of Conduct. So, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address? I have one card on the issue review items. It's David Rice. I think he's referring to our CIP, we're really regarding the Capital Improvement Program, CIP. David, welcome. Yes. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
My name is David Rice. I live at 202 West Knight Lane in Tempe. So, this Parks Checklist and Rating System is great. In some ways, it's nice if, it would've been nice if it were implemented two years ago when you guys first started talking about it and not halfway through when the CIP program's monies has been spent. I guess one thing I see is there's some parks that, you know, are way below what we would consider standard, but there's a lot of parks that are heavily invested in and continue to be invested in more. So, it seems like there's a problem on the low side and a problem on the high side. And kind of where I see that is in this, the Neighborhood Grant, the Marion Quarter Neighborhood Grant Program. Seems like what happens is the parts of the city that are most plugged into city government apply for the grants and get them. And there's maybe five parks, some small number of parks where the Neighborhood Grant money tends to always filter down to. So, there's, you know, heavily invested parks that get more and more investment each year. And I don't know if that's one area that would be helpful to, I don't know, I don't know how you change that. Maybe it's looking at how these grants are decided upon. Another thing I worry about is, yeah, we're investing in building all this stuff, but we need to maintain it as well. I mean, one thing I've found with using the parks is the city is, seems like they're struggling to maintain what's there. So, if we're going to be putting in more and more stuff, we should make sure that we can maintain it. And so, a problem with putting in additional stuff at heavily invested parks is we're taking away from being able to maintain the small number of things at the parks that aren't as invested in. So, I guess that would be one thing. The other thing that's mentioned in this portion of the program is the trees. And it'd be nice if there was some measure of how valuable the trees that are being put in are. There's just a number. I don't know if there's a shade value or some measure of whether they're close to a playground, close to the sidelines of an athletic field, or near sidewalk, or something like that, as opposed to planting a grove of 25 trees in the middle of a park. Because, I mean, I see lots of trees that are very useful, say at Tempe Sports Complex, Benedict, and things that are in pretty rough shape. And if we don't, we'll be planting all these...
Can you wrap up your three minutes?
Yep. Okay. So, I mean, so it'd be nice if there was some measure of how useful these trees are instead of maybe just blindly putting in there as a number, just in a checklist.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Granville.
Could, I'm pretty sure we have that information. We, there's a dollar amount associated with trees for shade, for, there's a whole thing, the whole calculation that Don did a while ago. If you could just provide that to the gentleman.
I think he's talking about location, too.
Yeah, I don't think it takes into account location, but it does take into account shade, property...
Instead of just plopping around.
Heat island effect. There were like, there were a couple of things.
And that's one of the things we're going to be, we're going to take into effect. We can have staff get, work with us on it.
That was just to that point of the location. That was a great point that the gentleman made on that because, but I know we're going to get to that a part of the agenda. So, thank you for saying that.
All right. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address this under the issue review session? Yes. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence for the record.
Justin Stewart, 814 West House Street. Hello, Mayor Mitchell and members of council. I thank you for giving myself the chance to speak today. I am the Chair of the Mitchell Park Neighborhood Association and a member of the Tempe Neighbors Together Group. I'd like to make a comment in regards to item 2E. Today, I am speaking for myself personally and not either of those groups as a whole. I was part of the working group of Tempe Neighbors Together that was specifically looking at the R3 zoning issues facing Tempe. I was involved with the discussion with city staff and was being shown to council today. I believe what is being proposed is a small step in the right direction to help protect and preserve historic neighborhoods in unfortunately zoned areas. I personally would have wanted to see more explorations of a more bolder approach and some ideas such as property tax freezes or other more aggressive incentives to homeowners to downzone. Yet, I do not see this as, yet, I do see what is being proposed as a step forward even if minor. Many of our neighbors have shown interest in such a program if it is offered. I look forward to continuing working with council and staff about this proposal and educating neighbors on what is put forth if it should move forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address this under issue review session? Could you please give my attention? Seeing none. In the interest of time, I do know we're going to be losing some of the council members and I've been asked to move around some of the schedules. If we also, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to take public comment for the work study session. So, at this time, in the interest of time, if there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the items on a work study session, which, or excuse me, the committee of the whole items, which is adaptive parks as well as new items for council consideration, I do have one card. And that person is Mr. Gary Dirks. If you'd like to come forward and make a statement now regarding item 4B 1. Thank you. If you could state your name and place of residence for the record, that'd be great.
My name is Gary Dirks. I am a resident of Fountain Hills, 15814 East Quail Point Place. I'm also the Director of the Julianne Wrigley Global Institute of Sustainability and the Director of the Lightworks Initiative at Arizona State University, which is an energy-focused initiative. I've been at Arizona State University since 2009. Prior to that, I was with British Petroleum for 34 years, where I retired as President of BP Asia-Pacific and President of BP China. I've been in the energy sector for more than 40 years. Energy is what I do. I've never seen a time in that entire 40 years when the energy system is as stressed to change as it is today. And that's happening for a variety of reasons and it's happening right across the sector. Technology, new business models, new methods of finance, new entrance into the field, as well as climate, are driving radical change right across the sector. I'm here to speak in favor of you establishing a study group because I think it's right and proper for the city to be considering, what are the impact of all of this change going to be on your city and this metropolitan area? The working group can consider all of the points that I have just made with respect to the way business models are changing, the way in which cost structures of energy are changing. It also has the potential for you to set a very clear direction for business, for the academy, for civil society, on where you think the city needs to be. Arizona State University has already set targets. We are already engaged with you on how we will achieve our targets and we're engaged with you on discussions about how you might set and achieve your targets as well. My institute, the initiative, Lightworks that I lead, would view very favorably the opportunity to collaborate with you as you consider what your needs are and what the future might be for energy in Arizona. And I want to simply end by pledging that should you decide to go forward, you will have a resource at Arizona State University to help you consider what are the appropriate options for you to be considering. Mr. Mayor and then council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address this? Now is the time on any of the work study items of the committee as a whole? Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kevin Conan. I live in Waddell, Arizona, which my address is 7326 North Citrus Road, Waddell. And I'm here to talk about renewable energy. I also am the Vice President of the American Hydrogen Association and I have my own company in alternative energy solutions as well. And I'd like to help move to 100% renewable as quickly as possible and like to offer my services, knowledge exploring a lot of technologies, solar, hydrogen, wind, you know, different technologies. So, hydrogen is a major focus and I would be very interested in participating in this working group when that would be, would come available. I understand maybe at the council meeting, you're going to be talking about that as well today. So, I just wanted to state my information and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
As well as ASU. So, thank you so much.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address this under the committee of all items? If you could get my attention, that'd be great. Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hi.
Hi.
Clark Miller. I'm a resident of South Tempe. And I'm here to support this initiative. I think that it is a good idea for the city to pursue this agenda. In fact, I think that it would be a good idea for the city to consider how it could also help its businesses and residents pursue carbon neutrality in addition to city operations. I would point out that recent data suggests that in Arizona, we spend about $2,000 per person per year to buy carbon-based fuels from other parts of the world to burn here to power our economy. That's a lot of money. And I think that if we were to think about not just how do we consume renewable energy, but consume locally sourced energy and also locally owned energy, that that money could flow back into Arizona's economy each year instead of leaving. This is statewide $12.5 billion a year. It's about 5% of our economy. For Tempe, that would amount to about $500 million a year that would come back into the local economy if we could locally source and locally own those energy assets instead of spending that money out of state. So, I think there's a lot of good upside for us. I would also point out that energy poverty is an important issue for the city of Tempe and for our residents and that energy has been shown to be a significant detractor from families' ability to get out of poverty because they pay high energy costs. And so, if we can find ways to use our energy strategies in the city and this energy transition as an opportunity to reduce the costs and indeed maybe even find ways for city residents, particularly in poorer communities, to derive income from local energy assets, that that could be a significant strategy for reducing poverty in the city as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments on the work study? This is the final time. Seeing none, I will close that portion of public comments. And I've also been asked, because there's some council members we're going to be losing, if we could rearrange the order in the issue review session, if it's okay with our colleagues, they would like to take items 2G and then go right down after that. Is that okay? All right. We're going to discuss, the next item is item 2G, which is the opinion on editorial regarding code of conduct. We are not looking to rehash this issue. This is just an opportunity of council procedure. There is a my turn column and usually customary, if the council would like to sign on, you have to bring it back to the council. And that's what's before us. Is there any other members of the council that would like to move forward, that would like to sign on to the code of conduct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman, Councilman QB?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else? Like to sign on to the opinion, my turn column?
Mayor, I know this is a late read for me. I just didn't have an opportunity to take a look at this right now. I just, I apologize. It just came in late.
All right. Councilman Granville.
Mayor, I certainly don't want to rehash this issue either. I think it's taken up too much of everyone's time.
Hang on, Randy.
I would just say, you know, to the body, I, while I obviously was frustrated with the process, I want you all to know that I don't think my words were the right choice, right? It was not the right choice on my part. Given the opportunity, I wouldn't repeat those choices. But I also think that, you know, I think it's time for us all to move on. And I think that this letter, while I understand the desire to add clarity, I think it just continues a dialogue that, that unfortunately, I just, I guess my ask is if everyone would just sort of put down their swords and we could just get to the business at work. Because I think the lesson has been learned on my part.
Okay. Councilmember Keating? Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would, you know, I had the opportunity to read the opinion piece and I think it's an important distinction that needs to be made as far as the facts of the case and how everything went. There's been several articles about this and there's been, as Councilman Granville mentioned, it's been on TV, it's been in the paper. In fact, just on Saturday, I saw it in the paper again. So, you know, I feel that it wasn't always portrayed in the media the way that I think a lot of us on council would have liked it to have been. So, with that, you know, I am opting this to sign on as well.
Okay. Councilmember Spire.
Mayor, my frustration with this entire situation has reached a new height. I want to say I was equally as frustrated by Councilmember Granville's publishing of a my turn piece in the paper on this topic when I thought the issue was over, as I am by the council's interest in publishing another my turn piece on this topic. I just, there's so many more important things that we can be dealing with right now. And I'm really just really sick and tired of this kind of stuff being on our agenda. And I wish, as Councilmember Granville said, that everybody would drop their swords, including Councilmember Granville. I wish that we could just get past this finally. And so, I have no interest in partaking in this or any other item in connection to the stuff that we've already dealt with regarding Councilmember Granville.
Okay. Councilmember QB and then Councilman Navarro.
You know, in some ways, David, I share your frustration and I find it slightly disingenuous, Councilmember Granville, that you're saying, "Put down the swords and it's time to stop this" when you, you published essentially your Facebook rant into the paper. And there were some misrepresentations in that article. You know, I didn't support the letter of reprimand, the second one. I thought it should have been a milder rebuke. But throughout the process and in Facebook and a lot of comments that came after that weren't corrected was a misrepresentation of the process. And so, I find that this letter is just very, this my turn piece is very even-handed. It's just laying out the process, kind of dispelling some myths, some misapprehensions about the process and how it came to us. You accused this body and kind of threw this body under the bus, saying this is all politically motivated, which was really unfair to do that to your council colleagues. And you misrepresented my intentions in, you know, not supporting the second letter of reprimand. So, this just clearly lays out for the public what the process was and, you know, so people can be more informed going forward. And I hope we never have to deal with this issue again. But, you know, you did publish that piece in the my turn. You obviously went after more attention for the issue in last Saturday's paper. And so, this is an attempt by your council colleagues to set the record straight in an even-handed way. And so, I do support the letter.
Councilman Navarro.
Mayor, I agree with Councilmember QB and I will support the letter. And I think after this, we need to be done with it, for sure.
Yep. Vice Mayor.
Just really quick, I too want to just echo, you know, some ditto's on what I heard and the reason why I believe this was important and that it does need to be published. And it is just to set the record straight and I think to clearly talk about the facts, not about personalities. And it has nothing to do with a sword. I just feel like a lot of us has probably gotten some emails and a lot of inquiries in regards to why we did what we did and how the process worked. So, I think this is really the best way to let the public know that it's about a policy, it's about a process. Is it perfect? Probably not. Can we do better? Absolutely. So, I'm hopeful after this letter goes out that you're right, that this will be the end of it.
All right. So, there's been...
Thank you.
Councilmember Keating, Councilmember QB, Councilman Navarro, Vice Mayor Hernando and myself, we're going to go ahead and sign on to that letter. And again, we're not going to continue to rehash this. This is just to see who wanted to sign on, the opportunity, that's our process. I think we don't need to move forward with anything else?
I...
You want, okay. I mean, I'm just, we've had calls, not to just let it go, but go ahead.
Well, I would, again, I would just, I would ask you all, I feel like there was a whole process, there was a letter related to me, there are now two of them. I felt I needed to respond to that letter because I felt that the process was held incorrectly. I felt like that put us at 1-1 and now this doesn't. And so, and I think there are things in this letter that are factually incorrect. And so, I mean, if the assumption is that I'm going to allow, like, I want this to end. Like, let's just end it right now. Let's all just shake and go home and be done with it. There's work to do. Like, there's work to do.
We are. We're going to continue the work.
There is work to do.
It's very simple.
You've distracted us from our work. Let's point that out.
Fair enough.
All right.
I tried.
I think, you have direction? Okay, moving forward. Next item is item 2A, our Downtown Tempe Authority Special Events Partnership. Kate's coming on down from the DTA. Welcome.
Councilmembers, good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. This request that you have in front of you is the result of conversations with city staff, representatives of multiple departments. And the general idea that I think that our shared vision is that events and activations and things that make downtown more energetic are very positive. And I do think that that's something that all of us feel should be supported. And so, as I mentioned, after several conversations, the four components of this request have been put together. And just to be brief but simplify them, first and foremost, it's just a process kind of simplification for activations, small activations, essentially streamlining and making it so that we go to the task force quarterly for a group of activations rather than for each one-off thing. And then eventually, if that's very positive and everyone likes that, then possibly moving to every six months to review things that are small one-off applications. The second piece of the request is the Sixth Street Market, which we launched last season. And the hope is that we would continue the same exact partnership that we had for that, that we had last year, which was the fees to be in the park were waived and the city allowed us access to use the restrooms. And those were all soft costs to the city. I think it was a positive event for all of us. The third component of the request is the Tempe Festival of the Arts. And what we're requesting there is just the waiving of the soft cost closure fee for the street, which is a $4,000 request, which again is a soft cost to the city. And then the last component is regarding the two holiday parades. Historically, those were events that actually were produced by the city. And at some point, we were asked to take them on. And originally, the city did cover all of the city, if the fees end permits, as well as gave a financial contribution to produce those events. And then the downturn in the economy happened and that shifted somewhat. So, we're just asking to revisit that. And I show a graph here of the fees and it's approximately $18,000 a year in soft and hard costs combined for both parades total. So, it's not a huge amount. So, that's the general sense of the request, but in spirit, it's partnership and doing things to make downtown vibrant.
And thank you. And I know we had our, the board retreat for the DTA yesterday. And I think the relationship and the partnership with DTA is very valuable. I do agree when it comes to events that are community-based, like the holiday events, like the Fantasy of Lights Parade and the boat parades. And I know we're going to, you know, the market on Sixth Street, I think that's something that we're going to, this opportunity, we already waived it in the past. I think that's something I could look at, and I think the council can as we move forward. One of the questions I have, though, is what are you going to do with the savings that you have? How are you going to allocate those savings? What is that going to be put into? I think it'd be good to have the council know where that is before the council decides to do all this. Now, keep in mind, I think we should come up with something to work with you all better in terms of some of the fees. Tempe Festival of the Arts, that's a staple event for all of you guys. That's something that's a moneymaker for you guys. It's been branded as, yeah, it's a community event, but it's also a community event that really boosts the membership of the DTA and our downtown, which I think is great. And it was really spoken about yesterday at the board retreat. But how will you utilize the savings that you do have? Again, I think it's important that we continue to work with you on the holiday events, the boat parade, Fantasy of Lights. If you could answer that, that would be great. And it's okay if we could come back, if you wanted to come back to us and say where those monies are going to be spent. I think that's something that would be good as well.
Well, the parades essentially lose right now anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 a year. So, we've been covering those costs with either retained earnings or other events. I mean, oftentimes, if there is a profit with the Tempe Festival of the Arts, that will pay for the loss with the parades. The parades have not been profitable for quite some time, just as expenses continue to raise. So, essentially, the savings would be in no longer having a deficit to produce those events.
Like I said, I'm fine with the holiday parades and the Sixth Street Park. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kate. First and foremost, just want to say thank you to the board members and to your staff for everything that you do. Because I think a lot of the things that we see here is really what makes Tempe, Tempe, right? I mean, it is a lot about the spirit of Tempe and the culture. So, I certainly think if there's a way that we can streamline it, if we can eliminate some of those costs, I'm 100% on board. I will ask you, because I know you and I've had this question, you probably know it's going to come, but if we're able to save money, and I think one of the things that we need to make sure that we hang on to, that is the longest-running parade in the state of Arizona is our Veterans Day Parade. And if there's a way that we could get DTA to become part of that planning in the future, I know Jim Grohns done a wonderful job for so many years. And I think we need to salute him for all that work and the continuation of things that he's done. But I know he's tired and would like somebody else to come in and help them out. So, I see it as a really great opportunity and you guys already do it really well.
Yeah.
And if that would be something that you would think about and maybe embracing in the future, I would 100% support that.
Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And thanks, Kate. Because all this stuff that's always been presented to us is what Tempe's all about, it's what we do, it's what people come to our city for. Obviously, the parades are a big hit for us, especially the light parade. And I know that in talking with you, Kate, that some of those investments would be enhancing those things even better. Enhancing the lights we put up on the street, enhancing what we do in the parades, enhancing the quality. And that, in my opinion, is also enhancing advertising and communication. So, I hope costs can go to those avenues. Obviously, we did talk and you kind of assured me on some of those things. But that's what makes Tempe marketable and what we do and do best. The other thing, Mayor, is I know that we've, as council, supported the live music and what we're trying to do organically with live music. And I would like to take this as an opportunity for a sidebar and maybe this is a Cal opportunity to really have the city discuss, working with the DTA, because the DTA's been really instrumental on trying to keep the live music going, doing the plaque programs within the streets, supporting the bands that have come out of Tempe, played in the Tempe and the history behind it, which is part of our, in my opinion, part of our fabric of what we're all about. But I would like to take an opportunity to probably use as a Cal committee to explore the city and the DTA in supporting or enhancing the live music scene and see what we can do and what opportunities would be out there. And I want to put that out there and hopefully work with the DTA on this.
Councilman Granville, the Councilman QB?
Thank you, Mayor. So... So, you know, I've always been surprised how much of this burden you all take on, because when you talk to the vendors about, for example, the Festival of the Arts, and you say, "How's business today?", they all say the same thing, "Business isn't good." It raises the prestige of Tempe, and it raises, and it gets sales for the people with tents, but the actual businesses along the street tend to not have very good days, right? And you and I have talked about this before, and when you do the Festival of Lights, it brings prestige and it brings people to Tempe that maybe don't have another reason to go, and it brings a lot of Tempe residents, but it doesn't bring sales to, you know, maybe outside of like the hamburger place, right? And so, I've always thought it was odd that you were, that you, as a person who represents the merchants, are spending money to promote events that don't make the merchants a lot of money on those days. It helps Tempe, and it brings a lot of tourism, and then it brings a lot of name recognition, and it brings people back on other days. And so, I, for sure, I've always viewed this as sort of like a special relationship in the sense that you're helping you, but in a lot of your events that you do, you are helping Tempe often as much as you are helping DTA in the way of name recognition and nationals or statewide press. The soft costs, I don't know why we ever charged you those. I think those should be gone immediately. I think you were being polite by asking to come back every quarter. You come back every quarter when it's an arm's-length transaction, right? You've been doing the event for 50 years, you've been doing a lot of these music things for years, decades, and you've never had an incident. Surely, at some point, we have to say, "You know what? You've been doing it basically the same way for a decade. If you're going to do basically the same way this year, then basically don't come back and waste everyone's time. If you change something, let us know." But I just don't understand why we review the same set of plans for the Festival of Lights Parade, year after year after year, and then charge you for it, when you're doing the exact same Festival of Lights Parade that, you know, that Mark and Robin saw when they were sitting on their parents' knees. So that's my pitch, you know, if there's consensus for it...
That was a long time ago.
What? It must be talking about Mark.
So my pitch would be, "Soft costs gone, and you guys only come once a year."
Councilman Keating?
So to clarify about the business model, I thought when we changed the model for the New Year's Eve celebrations, it was to benefit the businesses more, because having, like Councilman Granville said, having those booths there was taking away from business, but now that model's been changed so that we find more significant impact for the businesses, positive impact, is that right?
For New Year's Eve.
For New Year's Eve?
Yes.
Right. And then for the Electric Light Parade, we don't have a model of having booths come in. It is the businesses that receive a lot of business activity from the Electric Light Parade, right?
The Light Parade, correct. And it's also on small, typically, it's on Small Business Saturday as well, so there's a partnership there.
Right, okay, good. I just want to bring up, since it is an electric light parade, and we, I hope, are moving towards a more renewable energy, clean energy future, that there is an opportunity, no, but seriously, there's a company that's approached ASU, and they're approaching the city, they approach the city of Phoenix, but I won't mention the company's name, but they have solar-powered generators. And so, the benefit of solar-powered generators is you don't have the noxious smell, and it's powered by the sun, and there's an opportunity to have those facility, those units leased for free, just completely for free, as long as they can be stored. And I'd like the opportunity to connect you with that company and with what we're doing here in the city.
That would be wonderful. And just so you know, the SRP Boat Parade is 100% LED.
Mm-hmm, great.
Bam. Bam, great. Microphone drop. I just wanted, you know, with some of the comments, I just wanted, I think it's important, the partnership we have with the DTA. I think we all want the same thing, we want a vibrant, safe, livable downtown area that's for all to enjoy. And I got to be honest with you, been on the council and then serving on the DTA, where the point of the events that we have is to really gather people to come downtown, maybe sometimes they don't come, they only come for special events to see what's new. So there is a, there is an intangible benefit of having events, because you're getting, for example, the Holiday Parade, 40,000 people that normally would maybe not come down here, but then it's an opportunity for them to see some stores or some shops that they normally would not have seen, and that's really called marketing and event planning and so forth. So there is a value. So for the $18,000 you're looking at, that's really some of the value of getting, that you offer a value to your members of the DTA for those businesses when they come down here. And it's upon the businesses to figure out, how are you going to get those 40,000 people, for example, into my place of business to shop, whether it could be, you know, offer a discount or something in the night of the Fantasy of Lights Parade or the Boat Parade, or during the Mill Avenue Merchants Association. I heard yesterday at the DTA Board how the merchants on Mill Avenue or your members of the DTA really enjoy having the Mill Avenue Arts Festival, because it brings new people down that normally maybe would not come down. I think you average over the whole weekend over a quarter of a million people that come into our downtown area plus, which is a true benefit. But to that extent, I think, do think it's important that we have the partnership. So if it's the council desire to go ahead and grant what Kate and the DTA is asking, and come back in six, I think you said, six months? Or just for what, that's just for the event space?
The timing request is just part, that's part of the process change that would happen when we work with the event task force.
I think we should, I think if there's consensus with the council moving forward, I'm in agreement that we should look at waiving the soft costs, but have, you know, have a review at some point, like we do with a lot of other programs that we have.
Okay, just for all of these events, your reviews, I think would be just great to see how we're doing.
We're happy to do these.
Okay. Councilman Granville?
Just for one other point, I just don't want us to get lost. So sometimes DTA does events that are identical, right? They have music on every Monday. And as of right now, for every one of those events, they go through the entire process again, even though it's just another band at the exact same venue with the exact same people.
We're waiting on it right now.
It's not the fee, it's the fact that...
No, 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 we're waiting in the task force.
So right now, we're moving it for every three months so they can do them in groups. Is there any desire to have them come on a, every six months, assuming the events aren't different? If they're doing, you know, an event every two weeks for six months, can they just come once and get it all out of the way?
Can we do this, if they're supporting the three months, and we come back in a year and when they say, "Can we do this every six months?", would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
We can just look at it after that review and just see if we can prolong it any further?
Sure.
Can I add one piece of clarification?
Sure.
If there are recurring events, for example, the Sixth Street Market, we do already do that on a six-month basis.
Okay.
So we bring them the series, so what I'm referring to here is all the one-off little placemaking things, like the chair or the chalkboard, that we would bring them a list of like, here's what we're going to do over the next three months.
You don't come, you don't come to explain that you do the chair and the chalkboard every three months, do you?
No, we do that per...
Per time you put out the chair and the chalkboard?
No, like, per the first time. So every single time we do anything like that, we bring it to...
But once you've done it, you just do it once, and the chair stays out as long as you need it?
Yes, unless there's an issue, yeah.
Okay.
As long as it was originally permitted.
So you're trying to fix some of the stuff? I mean, we're doing, we're working with you.
Exactly.
Okay. And then if you could help, not financially, if you could help commit to working with us on the Red Lights Parade with your expertise, that would be great.
We would be happy to.
Just a tad bit on the live music, and I'll bring it up for Cal, but I do want to support that group if staff can remember that. But the other thing is, as the street card comes up, I know that we talked about the types of closures that we can have on Sixth Fifth, whatever street we want, with ballards and doing something that's very unique, and I'm hoping that is a conversation we can still have as we go through this process, because that will also help lower some costs because of barricade issues and stuff. So we'll revisit that, and I think I'll have a work group on that to make sure we can get through that process even better.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the Procedure of Naming City Facilities. Mr. Metten?
Good morning, or good afternoon, Mayor Mitchell, members of the council. For those viewing, I'm Stephen Metten, Deputy City Manager. I'm here today to present some staff-recommended changes to the city's existing naming policy. As you know, back in 2012, the city created the naming policy. Late last year, the city council asked the city manager to review the policy and bring back any proposed changes. Mr. Ching put together a small working group made up of Ken Jones, Deputy City Manager, Shelley Hearn, Community Services Director, Elizabeth Higgins, Mayor and Council Chief of Staff, and myself. We reviewed other cities' naming policies, other states' naming policies, and the federal government's naming policies. And before you, we have seven suggested changes to the existing naming policy. Some of them are minor in nature, but I'd like to discuss three. The first is the minimum length before a naming request would be submitted for a deceased person, a city of Tempe employee, or a city of Tempe elected official. In our review, we saw that some cities had initiated that condition to somewhat put some separation between an event, like a death or retirement, perhaps take some of the emotional or sentimental feelings out of that. The next is a creation of a naming committee. That naming committee, as proposed, is nine members. It would be seven seated chairs of seven of our boards and commissions, plus a staff member, plus a member of the public. That naming committee would meet twice a year, January and July. The naming committee would make recommendations to the council for those naming requests that are approved, for those that the naming committee has written, for those that the naming committee recommended not move forward. They would notify the city clerk, and the city clerk would notify the applicant that the naming request had not been approved. For those that hadn't been approved, there would be a waiting period before coming back of 24 months. So those are the three of the more significant changes. As I mentioned, some of them are more minor. I did want to review, because we met with our boards and commissions and got their feedback, and there are some suggested changes to the staff recommendation plus a suggested change to an existing condition that's in the naming policy. So the first is to include the Historic Preservation Commission as one of the seven boards and commissions, or on the naming commission, for the naming committee. We can do that in several ways. We can eliminate one of the existing boards and commissions that were recommended in the staff recommendations. We can eliminate the staff position on there, or we can increase it. Our recommendation would be to increase it by two if we add the Historic Preservation, so we always end up with an odd number of members. And we can, something to consider if we're going to suggest two members at large, would perhaps have one adult member and one teen member.
Nice.
The next, the next, and that, just so that you know, that recommendation was made by the Transportation Commission, a member of the Transportation Commission. The next two were recommendations that were made by the Neighborhood Advisory Commission. It is to change the language where it says on page four under Procedures, change the language in the fourth sentence under Procedures, to the current chair or designate, in case there's a chair who has somewhat of a time crunch on their schedule, that they could designate somebody else on that board or commission. And then the last is a change to the condition that's in the existing naming policy under felonies, and the suggestion was made by the Neighborhood Advisory Commission that it would, that we would not entertain naming requests for folks who are convicted of felonies, but only those felonies involving a moral interpretive. Look to the Assistant City Attorney if you need definition on that. I do have some in front, in front of me, but that'd be crimes against a person, sexual offenses, crimes against property, and crimes involving fraud. So those are the three that were suggested by the boards and commissions. Happy to answer any questions that you might have on all seven of them or the additional three.
I think this is a great step. Any comments or discussions from the council? We good with the vice mayor?
Yeah, I'm good. I like the addition, I don't know, is that what you're looking for? Stephen, is, if you'd be one of the additionals members?
Concurrents on the seven that are recommended by staff, and then concurrents or feedback on the three recommended by the boards and commissions.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, and the change of, from the nine, so then if, because on here, the procedure has nine.
So it has nine. So if the council wanted to entertain adding the Historic Preservation Commission, we can do it three ways. We can replace one of the nine that are in the, one of the seven boards and commissions that are in the draft staff policy. We can replace the staff member with this eighth board and commission, or we could add an additional member at large, and we could do that as two adults or an adult and a teen.
A nine, sorry.
So I'd need direction on that one, that one.
I think, I think nine's a really good number. I like the idea of having a city staff member, and then maybe the member at large could be a teen. I mean, because obviously, all these other people will be adults.
Yeah. It would be, and it's great that there could be two teens on there, because of course, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission would be a teen member.
That's true.
And sometimes it's great, because teen voices can get lost in a group of adults and to have a little solidarity with a second teen on the board.
Yeah, I think it's good. I think you're good with the nine.
Good with the nine and replace, or have the, well, so...
I think you could work with the member at large.
Okay.
But I like...
And have it be a teen.
But a member at large could be a teen or a adult.
Well, but I forgot, yeah, you know what, though? You've got the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, so that's going to be automatically going to be a teen, and I think an engaged teen, which will be beneficial, too. So I'm open to whatever that member at large may be, but yeah, I think nine's definitely a good, good number.
Okay.
And I think keeping that city staff member, I don't want to change that, I think that's a good idea, too.
Mayor, then I would just be looking for direction on if you would like to entertain the Transportation Commission's recommendation to add the Historic Preservation member. If we do that under the way the vice mayor just described, that would be ten.
You need to have another one. You need an odd number. Comments? Thoughts? I mean, the nine's fine.
I see value in the Historic Preservation.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, why don't we do, okay, what?
Two at large and one preservation, or another teen.
Do two, we could do two members at large and then have the Historic Preservation?
Okay.
Is that good?
Maybe one of the, one of the at-large could be another teen, so then there'd be two teams together.
Just keep it open. Yeah, okay. Is that good?
And the clarification on the felony, for only felonies involving a moral interpretive? Okay with us drafting that into the...
I'm fine with that. Is everybody else fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item is a recreational value capital improvement program. Mr. Meow, Mr. Bessler, who else is coming? Oh, we got everybody coming.
Craig, Hayden, Hayden.
You got Mr. Hayden?
Hayden, hate? Hayden?
No.
Hayden.
Hey!
Let me call it worse.
Well, we all.
We have to.
Well, speak for yourself.
Mayor, Members of Council, Tony Miano, Deputy Public Works Director for Field Operations. With me today, Craig Hayden, Parks Manager, representing the Recreational Value Capital Improvement Program. We are looking at for guidance on our methodology. We're pretty excited about taking an analytical approach to a way on how we would define and what type of amenities, how many amenities will go into neighborhood parks. This is a tool that can be utilized for urban forest canopy, for inclusivity index, and we're also starting to look at park sustainability index that we'll start working on for the future. But before I hand it over to Craig, I do, I would like to recognize Melissa Quillard, who actually was part of our team when we started this, Dave McClure, who actually did a lot of work upfront in helping us come up with the methodology, Amy Rissell, and of course, Craig Newton. And they put a lot of time and effort into this program, and so I just wanted to make sure they were recognized. That, Craig?
Craig? Thank you, Mayor and Council. Craig Hayden, Parks Manager to the Public Works Department. The Recreational Value Capital Improvement Program was, as a concept, first presented at council back in October of 2015 at the council retreat. at council back in October of 2015 at the council retreat. At that time, council had asked staff to refine the process, which leads us to this presentation here today. And as part of this presentation, I'd like to really start out by defining what recreational value is, as a reminder. I'll be describing, spending the majority of the time on this presentation, actually defining and describing the methodology and our process for the implementation process. We'll review the timeline at the end, as well as Tony mentioned, seeking some input and feedback on our methodology, what we believe is the fairest and most applicable way to actually implement this new and exciting program. So before we actually do define what recreational value is, it's really important to put it in context with council strategic priorities. And first and foremost, recreational value capital improvement program feeds really well into the quality of life strategic priority, specifically for our park users and our residents as it relates to the last two terms on there, with an emphasis on equity and diversity. These are two terms that are going to come up multiple times within this presentation. We believe that these are really key to implementing this really new, exciting capital improvement program. And then specifically, there is a performance measure that is tied to it, that is related to quality of life. It's 316 on achieving a rating of satisfied, satisfied or very satisfied with the quality of the city's recreational facilities. Next, there's also a sustainability priority, specifically the performance measure 4.11, where this will speak specifically to achieving a canopy coverage of 25 trees per acre, which is our, our goal, and council's goal as well, to ensure that we meet this as part of the capital improvement program specifically. So now, it's important really to dive into what exactly is the recreational value capital improvement program. First and foremost, the intention is to provide both an amount and type of amenities within parks that would generate really a diverse play and interaction experience for our residents, not just the residents that are currently utilizing the parks, but hopefully going to draw more residents within our parks through this, these additions utilizing these recreational value funds.
Just a quick, it looks like we added in the wrong PowerPoint. There's actually an updated one.
That's true.
And so the information you see on your packet and what's up there are not the same. Can we take a second and reload the right PowerPoint? That one, just, it's an older version.
Great.
Just take a second, maybe we can just pull it up. Thanks. Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I'll let...
All right, we're going, good.
Continue, please. Okay, so, just as a reminder, recreational value really is intended to provide both an amount and type of amenities within parks. They're going to provide that diverse play and interaction experience, so really a new experience within a park that doesn't exist currently. And it's really important to state upfront that we've been successfully addressing our capital improvement program through the four tiers, specifically on the first two levels through the last few years, which is a focus on public health and safety, and then maintaining the assets that already exist within the park system. What this recreational value capital improvement program does is it moves us then, while we continue to work on those level ones and twos, is it provides the opportunity to move into levels three and four at the same time, which defined is through customer enhancements, and also new amenities, and then system expansion within the parks as well. So it's really a supplemental to what we're currently doing, where the main focus still remains on maintaining public health and safety and the existing assets. We are now also going to dedicate some funding through this capital improvement program to those levels threes and fours for the customer enhancements, and then the new amenities within parks specifically. So the, the important question that ends up being is, is how do we actually implement this? Now that we've defined it, it's important really to take a two-pronged approach, where the first approach, the first piece of this puzzle, really is addressed through base amenity equity. And that really feeds back into the quality of life strategic priority that we mentioned earlier. And the idea with a base amenity is, these are amenities that should exist within parks regardless of size. So the amounts may be dependent upon size. If you get a 15-acre park, you should have more of these amenities, versus if you have a five-acre park. But the idea is that there are going to be four main categories that would feed into the base amenities, that we're looking to have an equity, not just within a park or two, but throughout the entire system, utilizing these capital improvement funds. And the four categories are trees, again tying into our performance measure for sustainability, 25 trees per acre. There'll be a ramada component that is tied to each park and the park size. Playgrounds, I'll get into the specifics of exactly what those elements will be within the playgrounds. And then there are miscellaneous site furnishings that are sometimes not seen as important, but are definitely critical, depending on the time of year, like drinking fountains, dog bag dispensers, trash and recycling containers within parks, unshaded picnic areas, and then also benches. These are things that, again, regardless of the size of the park, we should have these amenities within our system, but depending upon the size, we want to make sure that we're actually scaling them appropriately. So these are the four main categories. And our goal is to be as objective as possible, so we've utilized a, and we will utilize a point system to actually implement, score the parks, so that we know how parks rank towards each other, rather than saying, I think we should start over here, because I feel like this is the one that needs the most. We want to look as objectively as possible and utilize a point-based system that really is broken down in these four categories based on percentage. So trees, based on its ability to meet the 25 trees per acre goal that we have set, will be 30% of the score. The playground, which would have five really important components, would be another, another 30%. The five components for playgrounds would be, first, we want to make sure that there's accessible surfacing throughout the playground that we meet, and then our current standard for, for new renovations is that we actually exceed with full rubber surfacing throughout our playgrounds. Second is making sure that we have equipment within the playgrounds that really suit all abilities. We call this inclusive equipment, adaptive equipment, and the inclusivity index that you'll hear about a little bit later on speaks specifically to this point. We want to have a standard within our parks that provides abilities for all children to play within a park together, and that's an important component of this 30% score for a playground. There is also a shade component within the playground as well that's important, as we know in the summertime, it gets ridiculously hot, to where we want to make sure that we're actually providing shade, so we can extend the use of our playgrounds. Nothing like stating the obvious there. But then we have a couple other components. There'd be a single structure within playgrounds, so that kids can actually play together, but then also affording the ability for individual components, as well as part of this 30% score, so that kids can play by themselves if they so desire. So having all of these five components would feed into a 30%. Because the ramada is the shade for a gathering place or a needing place within parks, and shade components also factored within playgrounds, and then the tree component, it's rounded out at about a 10% clip for the, the total score. And then the site furnishings, the five that I mentioned in the previous slide, would again equal up to the 30% score. So this would give us an overall score for a park, and then we'd be able to rank the parks based on their overall score at these percentages. Our hope...
Can I just ask you a quick question? I think, Mr., I don't know if Mr. Rice is still here, but one of the things that he did bring up was about shade, and I guess the location, you know, the strategy behind where those trees are going. Can we talk a little bit more about that?
Certainly. Once we identify what the needs are, we'll work with our landscape architect, and with Bonnie Richardson, who's been working with Urban Forest Master Plan, specifically to address cooling effects within parks, trying to identify those areas where people gather, identifying walking trails, areas still utilizing and keeping open spaces important as well, possibly as you look for, for future use as well. But those, we would work internally with staff who are designers specifically, that would address those components. So I think that's going to be really key and critical to this moving forward, especially as we look at adding trees within parks, that we put them in the right place to provide the effects, and also the recreational abilities that they provide. So, great question. So if, if these are the four categories, I think it's really important to see, how could this possibly look? How could the funding then be spent? So this isn't, I use an example of a five-acre park. There is no exactly five-acre park out there, so this isn't representative of Park X. But the goal then, through this recreational value and the standards that we want to set, is to have a park that would have 25 trees per acre. So you're looking at 125 trees in this park. There would be a ramada, the playground would meet each of those five criteria that I explained, and then the site furnishings, based on the numbers that we believe is equitable. Unfortunately, there isn't very much historical data throughout the United States, I'm trying to figure out how many amenities are within parks, but we believe this to be the most equitable, equitable number. This is what a park should have if it was a five-acre park. But the reality is that there may be a five-acre park that has 45 trees instead of 125. It may not have a ramada. It may meet many of the actual components for the playground, but it may be missing a shade structure, and then it's hit or miss as it relates to the site furnishing specifically. So what we would then specifically do would be to utilize the recreational value funding to add 80 trees within this park, to bring it up to the standard. We would also install a ramada. A shade structure would be installed over the playground, and then there would be three extra picnic areas, which would be uncovered benches with grills, and then, or tables with grills, and then some additional benches would be added to the, to the park, as well as a drinking fountain, to make sure that this is where specifically the funding would be allocated through this capital improvement program, to bring this park and every other park up to a standard throughout our entire system. So this would just be an example.
So in the memo that you attached, there is a appendix A, and you talk about dog, dog bag dispensers. That's for dogs to have plastic bags to carry with them, right? So it's one per every three acres? How many parks do we have that are less than three acres? I know, putting you on the spot.
There are a few, like Bercher Park, Gaykey Park is a smaller park that's within the system. So we would ensure that there's at least one for the dog bag dispensers. But this would be our, and many of the parks for dog bag dispensers already have them at the entry points.
Right.
And if there's multiple entry points at a Gaykey Park, there may be multiple already there.
I'm just wondering, I mean, it's almost a guaranteed use of a park, is that someone's going to walk a dog? So couldn't we sort of guarantee that every park had at least one dog bag dispenser?
Certainly.
So is that...
That would be the intent through this.
Oh, because I just interpreted as one per every three acres, but you mean...
So up to three acres, it would have at least one.
Oh, good, okay.
That would be the intent.
And if it's five acres, it would, it would bear to the higher values.
Correct, wherever it sits. That would be the goal.
Oh, that's excellent. Great, thank you.
Okay. And assuming now that our, we've utilized these funds to address the base amenities that are lacking and deficient, to where we have equity among our entire system, we would then move on to what would possibly be, or is the actual intent of the recreational value capital improvement program, which is providing what we would determine as enhanced amenities within our parks. And these, again, just going back to the original definition, would provide that diverse, rich, new experience that currently isn't existing within a park or the park system, if it's a new amenity that we currently don't have within our system. And whereas the base amenities are focused mostly on equity, the enhanced amenities would be focused both on diversity and equity within our system, making sure that we have the right amount of certain amenities to meet the needs of our residents, but also that they are diverse within our system as well, so that they're not all congregated in one area, and so that the parks then have a rich amount of amenities based on what the desire is of the residents, and actually would fit within that park. So there'd be a much more robust public outreach process as part of enhanced amenities, typically due to, these are amenities that would drive people out, or would be possibly ones that would create a lot of discussion offline, like off-leash areas, for example. Some people are for them, and some people are against. So some examples of enhanced amenities would be off-leash areas, sport courts, like basketball, tennis, volleyball, pickleball, splash pads, skate parks, fitness trails, fitness pads, disc golf, and this is not a representative sample, but this is certainly some of the amenities that would exist out there. And then yet to be determined on how we would actually implement the point system, but we would want to look at the very same way that we're looking at the base amenities. We would want to look at, not the deficiencies from the enhanced amenities, but the opportunities that we have within our system of trying to make this objective as possible utilizing a point system by grouping and looking at what would be possible based on park size and where these amenities fit throughout the city.
Councilman Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. I assume you'd do this the same way we've done other sort of park improvements, where you just wouldn't show up with, you know, disc golf. You have some boards and some options, and people would put stickers on the ones they like, and...
Correct.
So if somebody, you know, really wants a splash pad, or a skate park, or a fitness trail, it's up to them.
Correct.
Okay.
Certainly.
But you say, like, you've got two points to spend, what do you want us to spend them on?
Correct.
Eight points, or whatever.
Exactly.
Okay.
We anticipate it happening that way. We don't know exactly how, but it would, it would happen with the robust public outreach, and it would be the choice of the residents. All right. So our next steps, then, they mirror each other and they parallel until we get to the very end, as we've already talked about, really addressing the base amenities first. But the important piece is making sure that we have an accurate inventory of both base amenities and the enhanced amenities within our system. As I mentioned previously, we would score the parks based on those inventories, and what we've come up with criteria-wise, and then we would rank and prioritize the parks as they have funneled out based on those scores. We would then address the deficiencies first throughout our entire system, utilizing these funds, and then we have the opportunity to add some enhanced amenities after that point. So we, they really mirror each other. We can work through both processes pretty similarly, but we would focus on the construction and the addition of the base amenities before we would add any additional enhanced amenities within the system, would be the goal. And then our timeline, as we're seeking council feedback here this afternoon, we anticipate here in the next few months, we would inventory, rank, and prioritize our base amenities once you feel comfortable on the process. And then we would update council via ongoing Friday packets in the fall as we work through that. And then we would address, address base amenities as soon as we have our information, and try to marry them up with existing projects, so that we're not going into parks and disturbing them multiple times, or multiple public meetings when we could actually address them at that period. So the hope would be this fall/winter, we would actually have the opportunity to seek some, some resident input as it relates to our first few projects for, for base amenities. Which leads us to a time of input and questions and feedbacks.
This is great. I want to thank you and our staff. I was at a neighborhood meeting, and Captain Granville was as well, questioning, you know, how much am I spending on our parks? I think our last CIP budget this last year was a little over 30 million? 30, 35 million?
Yeah, I think it was closer to 46 with the latest numbers that we just found.
And our parks, which I think is, it's really a testament, and having a system of this in place to do asset management, I think is helpful, and obviously residents want their feedback. So thank you very much. Craig, thank you for your service to the city in your 20 years. I think today's your 20th anniversary.
Getting close. Thank you very much.
So thank you.
Councilman Q. V.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
So great work. I just have a question. In October, I believe, we'll be hearing from Bonnie Richardson with the Urban Tree and Shade Program, and so I'm wondering how this, this study is going to integrate with that? And specifically, if we have a 25% goal for our parks, for tree and shade, and that might be, 26% may be our goal overall in the city, is that enough? I mean, we're talking about right-ofways, and bus stops, and parks as our main source of tree plantings, and I'm just wondering whether that goal is going to align, how would that goal align with the Tree and Shade Program, and shouldn't we wait to finalize that with, when we look at that Tree and Shade Program goal?
Yeah, I think the 25 trees per acre is a great starting point, but I think as we get further information, and as we look at the areas within our parks, we can certainly revisit that. We have been able to eclipse 25 at Iscare recently with that tree planting in the spring, and that's a very heavily activated park.
Yeah, that ground was hard.
That has some enhanced amenities. So that's really one of our good case studies of trying to pick and try to identify exactly how many trees per acre that we can keep, especially keeping in mind that there could be some enhanced amenities going within parks.
Sure.
So we want to make sure we identify some areas, even while we are planting, reaching the base amenity number for that. But I think it's good to keep an open mind.
But to clarify my point, we may not have enough surface area on right-ofways and bus stop areas to get to our, if we adopt a 26% goal, and it may not, we may need to have more of the surface area in the park, so it may need to be a bigger than 25% goal. And I would just like the opportunity to look at the Urban Tree and Shade Program and integrate it into your planning, and so as part of that input process, I think those plans need to be aligned, but...
Sounds great. Take a look at it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, I just want to say, you guys are doing a really remarkable job. We've come so far from where we are, and I think, you know, where we were in the point where we knew we have a lot of deferred maintenance going on, and some of our parks were in really bad shape, and, and I think that we're slowly getting to a really good place, and that even to just be able to talk beyond just doing safety measures, I mean, I think that's really, says a lot, I think, for you guys, your department, and all the work that you've really put in, and I think, you know, for the council and the staff together, to make sure that we're on a really good trajectory, and to understand that, you know, those parks are the hubs for those neighborhoods, and it's so important to make sure that they're healthy, and they are something that people want to come to and be a part of. And I think to create that buy-in piece at the very beginning, when we go to do any type of changes to the park, I think is really, really important, and the more of that we can do, the better. So, and I love it, I know we're going to talk about some other stuff down here, too, but I just want to say, you guys have been really remarkable, and, and really embraced all the thoughts and ideas that we all seem to come up with, so thank you guys very much for what you do.
Yes, sir. Good team effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, post-business license registration.
Ken Jones, Deputy City Manager, and I have Gary Tasky with me. I've never done a formal introduction of Gary, you've probably heard about him. He's our new tax and license manager. You been here how long now?
Almost a year.
Almost a year. But he's got 29 years of tax and license experience in the city between Peoria and the City of Phoenix, and he's never made a presentation to you, I don't believe, so this is your first formal introduction.
All right, so you're going to let him talk, or you just...
I'm going to let him talk eventually. Thank you. But I did want to kind of introduce Gary and the subject, and you know, you all know that the Arizona Department of Revenue has taken over the administration, licensing, auditing of transaction privilege taxes. auditing of transaction privilege taxes, and when that happened, Gary and I were both working closely with the league and working with the Department of Revenue on how that transition would occur, and it came to our attention pretty quickly that some of the information that we receive from the Department of Revenue won't be as free-flowing as it was before they took over, and that's why we, behind the scenes, have been looking at kind of alternatives, and we're now at the point where Gary has put together some ideas of how we might explore whether a business license or a registration would help us gather information, so that's why we're here tonight. Gary?
As of January 1st of this year, the Arizona Department of Revenue took over the administrative duties of tax collection, transaction privilege tax, otherwise known as sales tax. With that change in the law, cities in Arizona have lost their ability to collect tax, to license taxpayers, to conduct audits independently from DOR, send billing statements for unpaid taxes and license fees, and collection activities at this point. So prior to January, each city that was a self-collecting city, as we were, was able to use the demographic data that we collect on a tax application for various means throughout the city and throughout the business community itself. We would be able to gather statistics, we'd be able to share non-confidential information about businesses, and all that has been lost. We come to you tonight to ask for your direction if you would provide us the opportunity to do a full study of what it would take to implement a business license registry slash license program. There are approximately nine cities currently that, in the larger cities in the state, are the ones that we looked at, that do have a business license. Each one has gone their own independent way of whether it's annual, it's one-time, there's a fee, there isn't a fee, and there are various options available, from charging the fee to not charging the fee, to making it a one-time registry, or every-year renewal. So that is what we're coming to ask you for, that direction. We have found to date that there are about four primary advantages to having a business license. The first is, this information is most often requested by various city departments, such as economic development, planning zoning, police, fire, on what kind of businesses we have in our community and where they are located. We are no longer able to share any data whatsoever if we receive that information directly from the Department of Revenue.
Councilman Granville?
Just to interrupt for one question, just so I understand that. So if there's a, I don't know, an issue at some business, and an officer goes there and says, "Hey, I want to talk to the owner," and he goes, "Well, I'm working here," and you're like, "No, no, not you, I want to talk to the owner," and the person doesn't want to provide that information, can we not get that information from the state right now?
We cannot obtain that information that is collected on a transaction privilege tax license, that is guarded by the state and by law.
So if we just wanted to get a phone number to call somebody, we don't have the ability to do that?
We cannot share that.
For a business that's doing business in the City of Tempe?
Correct.
We used to be able to.
Yeah, no, I know, I just, that's amazing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, it's just such an amazing statement you just made, I thought, that can't be what you meant, but apparently it's what you meant. Okay.
Sad to say, as Ken said, we worked on a committee and worked with the attorneys of DOR extensively on this issue, and the department and the state interpret the state statutes on confidentiality very, very strictly, and we are not allowed, as they are not allowed, to share that information collected on a TPT application whatsoever, so, on any individual So many of the departments in the city itself rely on this information for various purposes, and we see a great benefit in being able to share that information with police, with fire, with planning economic development, and there may be some value for attracting business, that is to be seen, by knowing where businesses are located, and what the concentration is in certain areas of the city, so we look at that as an advantage. The second thing is, now that tax licensing is done by the Department of Revenue exclusively, we're dependent on that data being forwarded to us weekly, and we're subject to that only. While we do have the right to survey businesses to see if businesses are licensed through the Department of Revenue, and refer unlicensed businesses to the Department of Revenue, we have no means to cause that to happen. It is a recommendation, and we can ask the Department of Revenue to check into it. The Department of Revenue manages over 200,000 businesses in the state, so...
To that point, I know when we're, when the league and the cities were trying to work with the legislature on this issue, one of the things I think is important to note, and you don't have to answer it, but if you can get it to a Friday packet to us, Ken, the rate of collection that our auditors have done versus the rate of collection versus the state is night and day, and that causes me some suspicious in terms of, well, we actually, by no fault of anybody of their own, but this, we know the businesses in our community, we're able to audit those businesses, and they pay, you know, the respective taxes that they're supposed to pay, and so forth, but there's a huge disparity between the state collection versus our city's collections. I mean, I'm talking 60% difference, the numbers are right. I grew over, and that's one of the concerns we had from a league perspective, the city perspective, is, okay, well, how much, how many of these businesses are going to go, and knowing that we don't know that we're not going to be collecting some of the same revenue streams that we thought we would have, and it could be a budgetary situation in years in the future. So I just wanted to, and it could be in a Friday packet, Ken and Gary, it's just, I just think it's good for people to know, because, you know, our auditors more than cover themselves, and I think it's important that we continue to have our auditors, and have the data necessary to, not, you know, to say, "Gotcha," it's just to, you know, to make sure that we're, everybody's doing what we're supposed to be doing according to the law.
Thank you. Yes, we'll gather that information for you. A side note on that is that while we do retain the ability to audit, it is at the discretion rightly of the Department of Revenue, and multi-jurisdictional audits are strictly governed by the Department of Revenue, meaning that a business is in many cities at the same time, and it does make a difference to us in that we lose as much impact in that world. That is very true. Back to this advantage of the crosswalk, as I refer to it, the advantage of a business license provides is a crosswalk to what DOR is telling us through the transaction privilege tax license of the business activity in our city. A new license, a business license provides us the opportunity to ensure that the businesses are licensed on the business license side, and at the same time, can then check our records from the data the DOR provides to us, to see that they are, in fact, paying their fair share of the tax that they owe the city, that they're licensed, so it provides that advantage of providing that crosswalk. So the third thing is, we wanted to explore the idea of what's in it for the citizens of the city, and we thought of a plan to take all of the business license holders and provide them an opportunity to participate in a Tempe-sponsored website that says Shop Tempe. So it makes it very easy for a citizen at one neighborhood, "I'm looking for an accountant, I'm looking for a dentist, anything in my neighborhood, so I don't have to travel, and I don't have to do a Google search, and I can stay within the city." So it helps local business, and it helps the citizens, too. This would be a totally voluntary basis on what information they would want to share with us, their address, their hours, their phone number, so this provides an advantage to them. We also have the instance where oftentimes we are called upon to survey the business community, find out their needs. A business license that is well-spread throughout the city then provides us one centralized database, one central source for all information relating to all businesses in Tempe, that would make it more advantageous and efficient in trying to find out information from our business community. So with that, once again, we're looking for direction, whether you would like us to move forward and put together a formal presentation presenting different options to the city council.
And if I could just clarify just for a second, Mayor, what we're really, besides putting together a package, we really want to know whether we should go explore further. So all of the things that Gary's telling you are things that we're speculating on right now. We think that we have an advantage by gathering this information, we think that it will help the businesses, but we haven't reached out to the businesses, and what we're asking is, should we explore this further? We don't want to implement any program that isn't supportive of our business community, that doesn't enhance our ability to help those businesses, this is not a revenue-generating idea. We really think that some of the information that we're losing out on undercuts our ability to be able to support the businesses in our community, but we're not sure yet. What we really want to be able to do is go explore it further, but it's going to take some staff time to do that, and we didn't want to go down that road if you all thought that this wasn't a good idea. So we are not promoting this program at this point, we don't have any preconceived notion of what it might look like, whether it's a registry, whether it's a license, whether it's required. Currently, TPT is the only thing, transaction privilege tax is the only reason you need a license. That means all the service businesses that don't pay taxes aren't currently licensed, that would be something new to them, we know that that would present a problem to them. Those businesses, those dentists and doctors and things that aren't currently licensed, would have to get licensed if we promoted a license. We also know that there are a few statutory requirements that businesses that you can't license under any condition, like insurance companies, residential rentals, and I think there's one more.
Real estate brokers and agents.
Real estate, so we know that the state already prohibits us from imposing a local license on those types of businesses. So this is really just the question of, do you want us to explore this further or not?
Vice Mayor?
Just a couple things, I really appreciate the work, Gary, nice to meet you, and thank you for letting Ken, let you speak, it was very nicely done. Oh, you're getting a phone call, can't believe it.
How did they know you were here?
How did they even know?
Department of Revenue.
I'll kind of give you my two cents, and I think Ken Jones and I had a conversation about this the other day, and, you know, I definitely think it's something that we need to move forward and explore. I certainly understand that, that's something I think Don and I have talked about for a really long time, because when, one of the approaches of trying to find out what the businesses want, and how can we help them, and who's here, it was kind of sometimes a little bit hard to figure that out, especially the businesses that have been here a while. But one of my questions, and I'm hoping that you'll answer it in the process, and you don't have to answer it now, is you say that in the past, our departments have usually asked for that information, it would be good to know how frequently they've asked for that information, and what they've used it for. I think that's really, really relevant. I worry a lot about mandates versus voluntary, I think that's really important to have that discussion, and I think when you involve the businesses, it's great to have different businesses, a variety of businesses, you know, service, manufacturing, maybe some that are chamber members and some that aren't, just to kind of mix it up, somebody that's new, maybe somebody that's been here for 30 years, to get their feedback and thoughts. And I am wondering, too, because we are right in the middle of doing the business survey currently that you mentioned, about wanting to do a business survey, well, we are doing a business survey, and I think we're going to get a lot of really good information from that business survey, they ask, one of the best questions is, is, are we business-friendly? And it'll be curious for us, I think, to see how many people we can reach with the business survey and how we reach them, and I think that will be telltale, and so part of me says, I hope that feedback that we get, not just the information from the business survey, but basically how many people responded, and where they got the survey, I think will be really important as we move forward, because to me, I think it's super important that we continue to be business-friendly, business-supportive, it doesn't matter what kind of business you are, and I think, too, it'd be good to know the other cities that you mentioned, how long have they had a license? Is it something that they started with for a really long time, or is it something that they recently implemented, and if they did implement it, what did they do, and maybe there'd be some best practices that you've seen that would work good. I know in Public Works, there was some direction in regards to notifying all the businesses that had recycling, because there was some recycling changes, and they're making personal phone calls to the businesses, and I'm curious to know, how did that list come about, and how are they going through that? Did it come through your department, or was there another way, another mechanism that they used to be able to connect with all these businesses that are, you know, having recycling services? So, I mean, I think there's just a lot of questions, it would be great if you, you know, go forth and answer them, I think it's really important, I think it's important for me, from my perspective, is to make sure that we include the business community as we do this. I think, obviously, you know, public safety is top priority and very important, and if this is something that keeps our residents, our businesses, our visitors safe, then I think we need to, you know, make sure that we explore that opportunity. So, you know, my two cents is cautiously move forward and get some feedback and see what you find, and I wouldn't want it to be paid for, but that's my two cents.
David?
Thank you, Mayor. So Gary, if you have the answers to these questions, great, if not, happy to get them later, but in terms of the other cities that have implemented this, especially some of our nearby and peer cities like Scottsdale and Gilbert, do you know in those cities if it's voluntary, or if it's required of every business to file for a business license?
If I'm not mistaken, I will double-check, but I believe that it is by ordinance, their business license as a requirement.
It's a requirement. And prior to this year, I mean, every business in Tempe, if you made any sales, you had to already file anyway.
Yes.
So would it be fair to say that this would not be a foreign concept to businesses in our city? For example, when I had a business in Tempe, I had to come in and file it because I...
Yes, for those subject to tax...
Anyone who...
Is used to the...
Did sales of products.
Annual renewal, a requirement to license, yes, they're used to that.
Right.
Of course, now it's a little bit different, because we get the phone calls and the walk-ins that now we have to tell them, you have to apply through the Department of Revenue.
Right. Where are Chandler and Mesa in their process? How far along are they?
They're getting ready, looking at our memo.
Yeah, I see that, it says, "Planning a business license requirement," but does it give any more detail than that?
I can't speak, but I'll tell you, I know, talking with my other colleagues, they're all looking at something similar to this because of this situation.
And I'm just wondering, where are they in the planning? Are they where we are, where they're hearing about it the first time and trying to figure out where to move on? Are they further along, where they've already drafted ordinances? Do you know the answer to that?
When I first put this together, it was a number of months ago, and at that time, I don't believe that they had put together an ordinance at that point.
Okay.
But I don't know at what point they have or have not informed their council.
And I'm just wondering, sort of where they are at this stage, it would be interesting to know, kind of, are we the last ones to the party on this one, is everyone else kind of already there?
I think you said earlier there was nine cities, isn't that what you said, Gary?
Yeah, I just mean regionally.
Larger, the larger cities.
Yeah, regionally, there are nine that have it already.
Yeah, I see all mine listed here, I'm just wondering, in terms of the Southeast Valley, if Gilbert already has it, and Scottsdale already has it, and Chandler and Mesa were already working on it months ago, are we like the last ones to the party? And that's just what I'm wondering there. And I'm really curious to know, in each of those cities, is it voluntary, or is it required by ordinance?
Here's some, yeah, here's some information, I mean, I think we're in agreement to move forward, to explore it, all the other stuff, you can have sidebar conversations, and we can move forward, and give us that information when they come back of what other cities are doing, as we move forward, I'm just trying to...
Agreed. Yeah.
We don't need to labor it.
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement, explore, come back to us, because I think there's some value in it, and input from the businesses and so forth.
Yeah, I agree, the worst thing that happens is you bring us five options we don't like, but I think it's time well spent. The one thing I would ask is, is that as you look at those options, would you include, because I mean, it just makes no sense that somebody could have a fire code violation, and we don't even know who to tell they have a fire code violation, or they have a policing issue, and we don't even know who to tell, because we don't even know who's in charge, we just know, you know, the lady working the desk, or the guy working the desk, that's absurd. But I think many of us, if not all of us, have had some sort of small business experience, I've had three or four now, I don't, I'm not so interested in creating a duplicate accounting system just for the city, so we can check the state, but I'll wait and see. The one thing I would add, though, is could you include email in your request, and could you be sure that somebody can do it online? The idea that you're going to ask services or business owners to come down to the building to fill out paperwork?
No.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and also email as well, because, you know, a lot of people, literally, my phone says, "Text me," it doesn't, I don't even check my messages.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, in the interest of time, more...
Yeah, so I just want to say I really appreciate the localist argument you made, and I would just ask that when you do outreach to the business community, and I'm sure you'll work with the Tempe Chamber of Commerce on that, that you also include Local First Arizona, I think they'd be a great partner in trying to get the word out about this. Thank you.
Very good. Feedback, obviously, public safety is an issue, make sure, because I know those frequent checks that our fire department does, fire, first responders, just come back to us at a future date, another work study, or you can update us as we move forward, I think we're interested in seeing what happens. Great.
Thank you.
The next item is our voluntary downzoning, R3 zoning. Ryan's going to come on up.
You're not going to have tomorrow. What happens?
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening tonight, Brian LeVey, Deputy Director of Community Development. Here with me tonight is Ambika Adakari, who's our principal planner... Here with me tonight is Ambika Adakari, who's our Principal Planner over the Long Range Planning Section. Tonight, we're going to talk about the voluntary down zoning process. As we recall, back in January of this year, we had discussed a presentation to council about incentives to limit R3 zoning development. Out of that discussions, there was direction to produce a voluntary down zoning process. So, we're here before you today to discuss those matters. The outline, discuss proceeding with council direction on preparation of a work stack, items required to prepare reports, resolutions to adopt the voluntary down zoning process. We'd have an open application period. That application process would conduct neighborhood meetings, public hearings with DRC and City Council, and then ultimately, a decision by you all on the request. Part of the effort includes the voluntary down zone effort. As a rationale, looking at the general plan, a lot of these neighborhoods that have multifamily zoning with single family property on them, part of our oldest neighborhoods, we've identified those as cultural resource areas, meaning that preserving those neighborhoods with existing character is the utmost importance to the city in terms of general plan efforts. We've met with community owners interested in the down zoning process of those, namely have been leaders within the Maple Ash, Wilson Arts and Garden. And what's not noted in this presentation is also the Mitchell Park Neighborhood Association. They've expressed interest in the voluntary down zoning process. They would be an advocate as leaders in the community and members to kind of get the word out about this request and process. They saw it as an opportunity to preserve the residential neighborhood, the historic identity that exists with the low existing density that's already out there today, protect neighbors from pressure of development in those properties, as well as they have concerns with alleviating the lot assemblage where you have a higher zoning district designation and the assemblage of lots would then create even a higher density, and that's what's out there today. Part of that request, we had also talked with them about the down zoning process. They had done an informal outreach to just speak with the community leaders, neighborhood associations about, you know, is there an interest out there? Their study that identified, and the most important number you want to take a look on is the first top line is, yes, they would be interested if there were some incentives to downzone their property. And of those, 12 of them are actually property owners that within the R3, R3R zoning categories. We also had an earlier study done by Mitchell Park Neighborhood back in December of last year that also included about 12 property owners that were also interested in this incentive process. Comparatively, looking at the whole neighborhood, there's a multiple different zoning districts in this area. The single family zoning is R16. You can see in this chart, there's a range of density projections within the underlying zoning. The R2 is up to 10 dwellings per acre, and the R3 is up to 20 dwelling units per acre. So, the proposed request for the down zoning elements is we're making a recommendation to propose a rezoning for properties that are either R3 or R3R to rezone to an R2 multifamily district zoning designation, which is 10 dwellings per acre. The R2 zoning basically would allow a property of a typical lot size in that neighborhood of about 7,500 square feet to have basically up to two units. Now, those number of units would vary based on the 10 dwelling per acre zoning category for that. So, if you had a larger lot size, essentially, it would still allow potentially more than two units on a property. The R2 zoning setbacks are identical to the R3 and R3R setbacks. R2 will continue to accommodate a single family dwelling unit as well as potentially an accessory unit. And I know we have another working group working on accessory dwellings, and we hope to bring that back to you all fairly soon on that subject. The down zoning process will seek to waive approximately $3,300 in zoning and costs associated with the public hearing notification process. $20,000 is the actual fee, but then there's a requirement for notification that usually amounts to about $500. The development planner view, typically when we rezonate a request, there's a requirement to process also a development planner view. Since this is not intended to create development and rather downzone it to appropriate zoning district property, we would seek a waiver by resolution from the council to waive that requirement as well. So, potential eligible properties, we did a survey of the area and found that approximately 218 of the R3 and R3R zone properties are located in the Maple Ash and Wilson Arts and Gardens neighborhoods. Of those currently eligible have about 120 properties either have a single family or only two units on the property that would be consistent with this R2 zoning category. So, little parameters of the process, in order to qualify, again, the property to have to be either zoned R3R or R3 to qualify for the down zoning process, the property owner would authorize and consent to rezone the property to R2. The owner would submit, sign a letter justifying their request in the rezoning process. We'd have actually a specified application packet for this process that's available online. And then the owner would also sign a waiver and rights and remedies form. This is typically known as the Prop 207 waiver form. At the onset of the process, they would sign this form so that they would hold the city harmless in that process. So, outlined on the sheet is basically the timeline process. We're here before you die. We'll have about a two-week process that we can prepare the announcements and packets and information. We would actually go before City Council for a resolution to seek waiver of the fees and development planner view requirement. That would be on the September 14th council meeting. And then have an open application period from basically mid-September to the end of December. This will give an opportunity to work with the community leaders to go out there and promote the application process and then be able to collect, you know, a number of those applications that are provided from those property owners. At that time, then, city staff would prepare a neighborhood meeting that would come in late January, DRC within their February, March, and then wrapping it up with City Council in April and May. As a result of that initial process, we would then consider doing this, future applications that have a collection period by, say, the end of the year, and then we could go through this process again to find out if there is additional property owners that maybe missed this opportunity that could be able to do this process over again. And we're here before you tonight to ask for any council input and direction on this.
Well, thank you. I think this is great. This is something that we, as you mentioned, we talked about, and some of the neighbors in the neighborhood have been asking for something of this opportunity. One of the things I will say is, it's really, really hard, because we don't have a mechanism that frees property taxes, because there's so many different taxing jurisdictions. In fact, I think only less than 17% or less of an individual's property taxes only related to the city, which is, the rest of it is all the other different taxing jurisdictions. So, I think that's something that needs, people need to know that as well, as you look at your property tax bill, it just kind of blows me away. But, the other thing is, for individuals in these neighborhoods, majority of those homes are historic. Is there, is nothing preventing them from registering their individual homes at the state as a historic house, correct?
That's correct.
And if you do that, by designating a home as historic, it also does lower one's property tax bill because of the historic designation?
Correct. We have a local designation, historic designation process, which does not freeze your taxes, but the national register has.
National register, okay. I just, I just thought that was interesting. And I think this is, this is a good step in the right direction, but if an individual thinks we could just freeze property, that's, we can't do that. We don't have a mechanism in place for that because of all the different taxing jurisdictions. There's other, I'm sure there's other challenges.
And also.
I think this is, this is a good starting point to offer this up to our residents, if they still choose to do so.
And Mr. Mayor, the homes, there are only a certain number of homes that are historical, they have a SP overlay right now, but they may be potentially eligible, and we will be doing some other surveys to actually establish that. So, there's going to be a new inventory.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Granville?
Yeah, Mayor, I know you're short on time, so I, this is, I think this is one of the, well, there's another meeting going on. That's why, I know you, there's something else you guys are scheduled for. This is a really important topic for us, and so, I don't want to rush this.
That's fine.
Honestly, I just don't think this goes far enough as it is right now. I mean, I'm not going to say no to, because progress is progress. I'm not going to say no to progress. But, so you're asking someone to go from R3 to R2, which means you're talking about asking them to go from 20 dwelling units an acre to 10 dwelling units an acre by right. I don't know what you make per dwelling unit, but, but I'm going to assume that if you go from 20 to 10, that is a huge chunk of money that you are not making off of your house now, or some future developer isn't making off of the house when they buy that property and do that. And so, to say to someone, look, I'm going to have you go from 20 units to 10 units, I don't know, let's say you make $4,000 a unit or whatever, $40,000, and my consolation to you is, you don't have to pay the application for that? That seems like not enough. And I'm not saying no one will take us up on it, but, you know, it's a certain group of people that showed up to your meeting. There's a certain degree of self-selection, right? The out-of-state landowner didn't show up to your meeting, the rent that's sitting on it and waiting for the grandkids to build something on it. I would say, maybe, I want to get this right, so my ask would be that maybe go back, work with residents, and come back with some ideas, not, not to say we want to do this, but at least give us some sort of good, better, best options to choose from, because right now, I feel like the option that we have is the good level, and I don't see options for the better and the best level. And I agree, the property tax one's only 17%, but we could, for example, take that 17% that we get, and then at the end of the year, right, you would check back for 10% of that or 20% of that for a period of 10 years, so that the person who's been in their house for 30 or 40 years and is on a fixed income, you know, they have an ability to continue to stay in that home.
Councilman Cooby?
So, I share some of the concerns of Councilmember Granville, and I think this is an important first step, and I don't want to delay that. I want to move forward with it, because I think it is a good first step. But, I do worry about the incentive being enough to really, to make a difference. And I know that on the January 5th meeting, I thought we talked about, because this idea was initially sort of brought up or formed a little bit at that meeting, I thought we were going to do, looking at other university, community, towns, cities across the US and see what they did. I know we have our own, a unique, our preemptions and such in Arizona, and our own unique situation, but I thought we were going to look at towns facing similar gentrification issues and come up with some suggestions, or just, just even like case, case studies or best practices. Wasn't that supposed to be happening?
Councilmember Cooby? We haven't really done that kind of study in a comparison, but we know what happened in Phoenix in 2004 and 2006. There was a community with about 200 different homes. They came to the city and they wanted to downzone their property just like this, and so that did happen. So, that is one example that we know, but other examples we can definitely look at.
Maybe I should just this, because I think this is of interest of the entire council, that without delaying this, this is a good start, but this is still a working document. So, in other words, like, we're still looking at other ways that you can, that we can look at to incentivize if other individuals wanted to have the opportunity to downzone, and if it was, if there was a certain type of incentive that would help a decision-making in that process. On the flip side of that, though, from a city perspective, what would that mean for us too? Because, you know, we also have a model of, and we'll just see, you know, cost recovery for certain fees, because we're not making any money on it, it's just to make sure it covers the staff time and so forth. So, one of the things, the flip side is, okay, yes, we're offered a certain amount of incentives, but what does that mean to our staffing levels? What does it mean for the city? Because obviously, this council, this exact council, always is looking at, we have a cost recovery method with certain events and things that we do within the city. So, like, we're not waiting for certain impact fees for development unless, you know, if it's going to harm our staff and so forth, or we have to hire outside additional staff. So, it's something of that nature. I think it's important to look at. If the council would be amenable to that, without delaying this, look at this timeline, this is a good first step. We're not done by any means, because we're always looking at ways to improve. This is an opportunity for, to give staff, the direction from council, to go back and look at other ways to help, if there's anything possible to help incentivize even more for an individual to downzone, if that would be good. Vice Mayor?
No. Mayor, I think that's a great idea. I mean, I was already looking, I mean, this is something that we've been talking about since January, and so, I think we're already in August. I say move forward, but I think you'll get a lot of really good feedback as your timeline progresses and the meetings that you're going to hold. I think that's, you know, a great opportunity to ask and just get some feedback and see how it, how you might be able to bring that back and say, you know what, I don't know, it's not looking so good, or we had some different ideas. I agree with the mayor, I think it's going to be a working document that, you know, is always going to be open for some improvement. So, I say, don't belabor this and hold and don't do it. I say move forward, but at the same time, let's just keep our ears open and see what we hear along the way for different and better opportunities.
Okay. Certainly.
Could we have a little clearer timeline, Mayor? Than just, I mean, whether it's.
Well, the timeline for this is that.
This moving forward. But, I mean, where could we slot in the sort of better and best option presentation?
I don't think you can do until after you go through that. That's where you're going to get a lot of your feedback.
Right.
I mean, right?
One suggestion is that we probably don't want to close the application period that one would be eligible to go through this process. So, we probably want a definitive answer, and what type of incentives would be considered before the end of the year, before collecting, moving forward with actual the hearing process, which is a neighborhood meeting and the public hearings. So, we'll definitely come back to you all with other options.
I'll just say, my frustration was, so I know I mentioned the idea of a property tax rebate at the end of the year. I know from the meetings, the residents suggested a property tax rebate at the end of the year, but that's not even presented as an option here. And so, I don't, I don't know what, you know, I just, it seems like there were more options that were available, but we weren't given a choice, like, a tiered choice. We were given a good first step, but I don't want to delay. I agree with you. But, I want to know what option two and option three are, even if we end up implementing them in year two.
Certainly.
But, we also, with that, and I disagree with that, but we also need to know what are the unintended consequences or something like that. Because I remember not too long ago, we had off-fuels. It was all, the intention was really well received regarding off-fuels and cars, but it ended up bankrupting the state. Now, I'm not going to say that this is going to end up bankrupting the city of Tempe, but there are some unintended consequences that does happen. There has to be some timeframe, a timeline to do it.
Yeah, some dollar amounts. Like, if we discounted 10% for 10 years, what would that look like?
And I will notice, on the survey that we have of the houses and properties that are available, it's 200, whatever we said. But, of the 200 people that responded, less than 10% said that they're interested, whether or not they follow through with this or not, but it could change based on.
Yeah, the trouble with these surveys, it's like hypothetical.
Right.
And then people can give you some answer, okay, I'm interested in giving the right incentive, unless you really offer it, because it's voluntary, you actually don't know how many people actually will apply. So, that's, that's a little tricky part.
Okay. So, I think the directions move forward with this program that you've presented with us and the timelines, while also looking at ways to increase or come back with some other opportunities for good, better, best, if you will.
Thank you.
As long as, you know, make sure that the city is held whole with our staff, and also look at the unintended consequences, and what is actually feasible for us that we, if we can do that. I mean, it has to be, it can't be for indefinite. It has to be some mechanism in place.
And I reached out to a group called Local Progress of progressive municipal officials, and they're looking into sort of best practices that they've seen in their cities, and if we can reach out to the National League of Cities and that group, because they're very much a sharing of best practices across the US, they may have some ideas as well.
Certainly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is.
Where am I?
Oh, the Bloomberg philanthropy for the mayor's challenge. I, I would just ask the council, and we'll bring the rest of this up back, if we could get direction as the council moved forward to have staff look into this. This is a tremendous opportunity that Mayor Bloomberg, the Bloomberg Foundation is, is challenged as offering cities. I mean, the grand prize winner receives up to $5 million, and then the, the four runners up receive about $1 million each. The 35 cities that will be selected, each get $100,000 to do a study in terms of looking at potential, you know, challenges that we can overcome, that we can implement in other cities across the country. This is something I think is, is unique for us. It fits everything we're trying to do with our priorities. So it's okay with the council, if we could have staff, work with staff to come back with some, some challenges and stuff that's not, that, that we see as a council, and we're talking a little bit more about this at the retreat, but I think is a good opportunity.
Yep.
Okay? Go ahead and move forward with that. Next item is.
Adaptive Parks.
Adaptive Parks.
I believe.
No. I'm just going to go right into the committee of the whole items, if that's okay with everybody. I know there's some members in the audience that want to speak, so we have up to three minutes.
We already did that.
I know we did that, but I've been asked by a colleague to ask if some of these members. Now, we're, this is coming back to our retreat, so everybody knows because we have to be consistent on how we do stuff. And anyways, with that being said, if we could have the comments, less than two minutes, that'd be great. You have up to two minutes to speak on the items on the committee of the whole. One is adaptive parks and a municipal renewable energy target. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention? Please come forward. Yes, state your name and place of residence for the record. And again, we, because we already had a public comment period, if you can just keep it to two minutes or less, that would be fantastic.
My name's Carl Parrish. I'm a resident of Tempe, long-term resident here. I'm also a business owner, and I am the Renewable Energy Specialist for the Arizona Sustainability Alliance. So the Arizona Sustainability Alliance is a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to creating and supporting cutting-edge project-based sustainability solutions in Arizona with over 250 volunteers, many of which live and work in Tempe. AZSA is working on the ground in communities and cities to promote the use of renewable energy. AZSA strongly believes that with the recent signing of the Climate Mayor's Alliance, now is the perfect time to reexamine our targets, as there are currently seven cities running on 100% clean energy and 24 other cities have made public declarations for 100% clean energy. We believe Tempe has posed itself as a leader in sustainability, not just in the Phoenix metropolitan area, but across the state and country. And now is an excellent time to create this working group to start looking into how we can also meet that 100% guideline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and the app, this is for everyone. The ask is if we could create a work, working group committee to look at this target date. So no policies are going to be decided at this meeting on this side. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address this? Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. Yes, sir? And then if you could be on deck, a little baseball terminology?
Good evening. My name is Ron Rodell. I'm a professor of electrical engineering at ASU, and I just want to take two minutes to mention to the council members that this semester, the engineering school and the business school are partnering in putting together a new class, a joint class with business and engineering majors, who are going to work on a semester-long project looking at some high-impact issue. And we settled on 100% renewable energy target. And we know that you're going, you're interested in this because of the issue described here in the COW. So all I want to do is let you know that we're putting to this, putting together this class. The students will work together on building a variety of potential roadmaps for going from the present state, or whatever that is, whatever the renewable target is in Tempe now, to 100%. And we would like to just volunteer our services and our information to you as we develop this course and we develop materials. Maybe in December, we can present to you some of the findings and maybe be consistent with or support whatever your staff is working on this.
Fantastic.
So I, I got the card for the clerk. I'll send this, and I know Lauren, so I'll, I'll send.
You do?
Oh, yeah. Who doesn't know Lauren?
All right, thank you.
She's Miss ASU. And so we'll keep in touch.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Sir?
Hi, my name is Cliff Anderson, resident of Tempe, 513 East Dairy Drive. Very supportive of your, your plans to discuss sustainability. I think financial responsibility is very important. I think by that you mean the, you know, reasonable cost, right? So we don't have to spend too much for it. But, you know, I think that as far as motivation is concerned, yeah, it's nice to save Miami Beach, but I think there's a lot more that this can do for the city of Tempe itself. And I think one of the things we really have to think about is our air quality and our health. I, I know that's mentioned in the, in the documents, but, you know, we have a lot of ozone alerts in the summertime. We have a lot of particulate matter alerts in the wintertime. And I think this is a, a real threat to the livability of the city, and so I think this could be a way to, to start making some real progress in improving our air quality. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes? Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. If you could be on deck, sir?
My name is Jim Malley. I've been president of Tempe for a little over 20 years. I'm here to speak about, about the renewable energy initiative in, in favor. And I, I guess I have the, the, the perspective I want to present is not what's good for us, but what's good for our grandchildren. I have grandchildren, we're going to all have grandchildren, and the decisions we make now are going to affect our grandchildren. They're going to have to deal with the things that we didn't deal with if we don't deal with them now. So I'm here to speak for, as an advocate for all of our grandchildren, that their life will be the same quality of life that we were born into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
All right. Thanks very much for taking a little bit of extra time to hear from some of us tonight, Mayor and council members. I'm Brett Fanshaw. I work with Environment Arizona. It's a statewide environmental advocacy organization. I want to applaud Tempe for all the sustainability efforts that you all have been working on, and I think they're important to, to continue, and particularly proud to have worked with many of you on the current 20% renewable energy goal here in the city. It's been exciting to see the city meet some of the benchmarks along the way, and I think it's really exciting to, to hear Tempe talk about becoming one of the now nearly 40 cities that have either hit a 100% goal or are, are on their way to doing it. And certainly, we have ramped up renewable energy a huge way across the country. Costs are down as well. We're using less energy, and so we have the technical know-how and resources to do this, but I think it's going to take political will and, and steps made by this council to, to get there. And so I think that's really important. We are also working with Professor Rodell with their class at ASU this semester, and I think it's a really neat opportunity to work with the engineering and the business schools on this issue, and hopefully they can help advance this in the city. So thank you very much for the opportunity and look forward to working with you again.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none? Thank you for those comments. Item, the first item on the committee of the whole is item 4A1, which is adaptive parks. Robin?
Yeah, I get it. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Councilmember Shapiro and myself, this was our working group.
David, sorry.
Yep. It was, it was basically one of the things that we had talked about and we've been working on, which was accessibility, making sure that everybody had access to the parks and how important that was. I know that was something that David brought up and was very passionate about, but we wanted to take it a step further. We don't want people just to be able to get to the park and to the play equipment, but we want them to be able to enjoy it. And whether they're somebody that has disabilities or without disabilities, we knew that what we were doing, we could definitely do better. So I know in our memo here, you can see the people in the working group, and I just want to give a shout out to them. They were really phenomenal to work with, you know, Shelley and Josh and Tony Craig, David and David, and Michelle Stokes, our ADA compliance specialist. It's been really great to work with her, too, and, and, and our staff. So I want to just say thank you for, for them. And Craig mentioned it earlier. He kind of set the, the stage for us about being able to take our all-abilities type of play to that next level and make sure that we are setting a standard for ourselves when it comes to what's happening in our neighborhood parks and what's happening in our community parks. So what they've actually come up with was an inclusive, was inclusivity index, which actually would kind of set some standards as the parks, based on the acreage of the parks and, and the opportunities for the neighbors and ourselves to at least hit the minimum standards, if not exceed that standard. So I, you know, I'm really excited about this opportunity. It comes with seven different categories. You can see it in the memo, whether it's spinning, swinging, climbing, crawling, upper-body balancing, or sensory, just really giving everybody an opportunity to be able to get to the playground and play. I think really sets the tone about who we are as a community when it comes to being inclusive. So I, I was really excited to be able to do this. I don't know, David, if you have anything you wanted to add? The one thing that I did want to say was, when we had the chance to talk about parks, there were some other things that came up in our working group, too, which we talked a lot about recreation and the ability for, for all, all children and even adults to be able to utilize our equipment or the ability to host recreational-type opportunities in our facilities. And so one of the things that we would ask is, we would like to kind of ask for you to approve the inclusivity index that we brought with you here today. And I think actually, Public Works is kind of already doing it, and, and so I already appreciate you guys were really well on your way to getting there. I think we just elevated it to a completely different level. So I think that's going to be remarkable, and I'm hopeful that the North Kiwanis Park is not going to be called the ADA Park. I think we can come up with a lot better name than that, whether we've agreed that that's not a very great name. So I'm looking forward to that, and I think that's going to exceed all of the standards that we've set here today. And what we want to do is just be able to continue to look at some of the recreational opportunities that we're doing in the city and how we can do them a little bit better. So not only bringing this here today, but continue the working group because there's actually people out there doing a little bit more research and homework to see what kind of other needs and improvements we can basically elevate. So if you guys are okay with that. David, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. You, I think, explained it very eloquently. You know, one, I, I just want to say that I think a lot of cities or a lot of city staffs could kind of just phone it in in response to requests from council like this. And, you know, Robin and I, you know, came at this ideally wanting to have one park where, where we could really be more inclusive, but our staff really stepped up on this, and you all should see the work products, all of the work products. It's not all in our packet. But the, the charts and graphs that they came up with kind of showing us where all of our parks fall on this inclusivity index, it, it was really informative, and it's really amazing, actually, we do have a lot of equipment out there that is pretty accessible, but, you know, we, we still have a ways to go to get to, I think, where we should be as a city. And I, and I think our staff is totally on top of it because what they came back to us with really shows that they're determined to make sure that this is some, that our, that our playgrounds and parks and equipment are accessible, accessible to people of all-ability levels. So this index, just, if you haven't had a chance to kind of look into and read it in the packet or, or get to see the information that Robin and I saw, just know it is incredibly well-thought-out and very detailed, and it's not just folks who don't know anything about this in terms of all-ability levels and playground equipment that just threw some stuff together. Like, our, our staff became very well-educated on this and consulted some real experts and put together a really comprehensive plan.
Perfect.
And this is great. So I, I think we shall be supportive of it.
Good. So we're going to contest this move forward?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next item is municipal renewable energy target. I am working on a committee with Councilmember Cooby, and I believe Councilman Keady wants to be part of this group. And I will take it over, turn it over to Councilman Keady.
So, yeah, I think this is one small step today, but I'm, I'm very excited to bring this forward with the mayor. The mayor, the U.S. Conference of Mayors in January, I signed on to a unanimous resolution.
May, June?
Oh, June, right, right. Signed on to a unanimous resolution that cities commit to 100% renewable energy goal, whether they're talking about city operations or a community target. So here we have, you know, the withdrawal from the Paris Accords, which has supposedly happened, but I think in effect, we've seen a ramping up of cities' commitment to do the right thing and to do what they need to do, which is cities are going to be responsible for 85% of greenhouse gas reductions. The cities are stepping up to the plate. They're still in. They've signed on in a major way. I think actually, the withdrawal, the withdrawal, whether it's really happened or not, has actually spurred a greater, a greater initiative and a greater will to, to get this done. So, you know, we made a goal, good goal, four years ago, or 2014, for a 20% goal, and who knows what our goal will be? I'm hoping it will be 100% myself. I feel that goals should be aspirational. Goals should be such that staff comes back to us and says, "Okay, we can do this, maybe, but you better give us the resources. You better give us the collaborative partners. You better help us with this because if you really want to get to this, these are the steps we have to take." So Braden Kay, who's our sustainability manager, has outlined a process that's very defined and time, time ordered, and it includes four meetings, one with assessment, one on strategies, one on targets, one on policy recommendations. So we intend this not to be a six-month process, but to come, come back to council with our, our recommendation. And we have multiple partners that are stepping up to, to offer their services, including Dr. Rodell, thank you so much, and Gary Dirks from the, the Global Institute of Sustainability and Lightworks, who is really intrigued about the financing opportunities that are there. He has very close relationships with SRP and connections with APS, and so he wants to really focus in on some of the financing aspects and to look at possible hydrogen components. So we're glad to hear from our hydrogen alliance friends as well. And then we have some public members and NGO members, Environment Arizona and the Arizona Sustainability Alliance. So I think we're going to look in, in a very deep way at this issue and come back with a recommendation. And I want to just emphasize that this is one piece of the pie because we know we maybe can't do that much with a, with a residential rooftop solar component right now, but there are a lot of other opportunities that we can look at, and that will come from our climate action plan, which Braden Kay has been working on so diligently for the entire summer. So this is one piece of the pie, and it might set a goal, and from all of that, that goal will come a lot of other goals. And I'm very excited to work on this with you, Mr. Mayor, and really salute your leadership nationally on this issue and hope to move forward.